Welcome to tonight's meeting. Let's get started with tonight's agenda. Mr. Lesher, do you want to start us off with the with the prayer? That would be great.
I certainly will. Thank you very much, Mr. President. If you will, join me in a moment of prayer. Gracious God, we come before you as equals, all created in your image. Asian and African, white and Native American, teach us to view one another as all your creation, deserving of dignity and respect without regard to race or ethnicity, sex or ability. Deal the brokenness of our relationship so that we can perceive our common purpose here on earth. Set our minds tonight on all these things as we work to govern your people here in Talbot County with justice and equity. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Let's follow it by the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, Council. Good job. Thank you, Mr. Lesher. I really appreciate your kind words and hopefully we all can practice that, that's for sure. Okay, Council, on the agenda tonight, agenda on March 23rd before us, agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections in the agenda? Hearing none, the Chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Distribution, dispersments, I'm sorry, dispersments. On March 9th, March 16th, and March 23rd, Council, have you had a chance to review the dispersments on the 9th, 16th, and the 23rd? Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections with the dispersments? Everything okay? Hearing none, the Chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, sounds good. Okay, let's move on. We have a proclamation, okay, International Transgender Day of Vibrance, okay? Council, we have a proclamation before us. Madam Secretary, will you please read the proclamation into the record, please?
Certificate of Recognition, International Transgender Day of Visibility. Whereas transgender people come from all walks of life and are our coworkers, family and neighbors, and are a diverse community representing all racial, ethnic, and faith backgrounds. And whereas International Transgender Day of Visibility celebrates transgender representation, activism, and equality, and is honored each year on March 31st as a time to celebrate transgender people around the world, their courage to live openly and authentically, while also raising awareness around the discrimination transgender individuals still face. And whereas gender is a spectrum, and we honor the bravery of the many transgender individuals who live and work in our community in their authentic gender, and reaffirm our commitment to promote the full inclusion of transgender individuals in our community. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize March 31st, 2021, as Transgender Day of Visibility in Talbot County, and encourage all citizens to treat each other with dignity and respect without exception. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 23rd day of March in the year of our Lord, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Pack, I really appreciate you sponsoring this very important proclamation. Would you like to say a few comments?
I would. I don't know whether or not Ms. Tina Jones is on with us, Ms. Moran or Ms. Morris, maybe we can get her on as well.
I think she is. I think so.
Okay, well, I'll just speak very briefly and then I'll pass it over to her for additional comments. It's been a year now, and I think this is one of the first proclamations that came to me as Council President last year, right when we went into our shutdown, and we went into virtual meetings, and we were not able to have Ms. Jones and her group come and present this proclamation and receive the proclamation from Council. So now we're a year in this loop, and we're still dealing with this dreaded disease of COVID. But what this proclamation speaks to, in my opinion, Ms. Callahan, is equality, and it speaks to treating people fairly, persons of different gender and different gender identity, making sure that they are treated fairly across all professional and social spectrum. So I certainly support this. I support the fair treatment of individuals in our community. And so, yes, I was honored to be asked again this year by Ms. Jones to sponsor this, and if she's with us, I'll yield the rest of the floor to her.
Yep, that's kind words, Mr. Pack. I appreciate that, and I think we all agree to that. So, Mrs. Jones, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can. Welcome. Appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you so much for, to you and the Council for recognizing Transgender Day of Visibility. Most people don't realize, but over 1,000 transgender people receive gender-affirming care services in the town of Easton. While not all of us live in Talbot County, it would do contribute significantly to the county's identity and to its economy. As you mentioned, Transgender Day of Visibility does occur on March 31 each year. It's a time for us to acknowledge our transgender neighbors. You may ask, why is that important? The answer can be found in the day's name. It's about visibility. While trans people make up a small percentage of our community, we are often targeted due to the fear that is fed by misinformation. By acknowledging our trans community, we begin to address this fear and eliminate the longstanding stigmas and dangers associated with being transgender. Through visibility and acceptance by cisgender allies, the larger public will become aware that trans people are not social or sexual deviants. Our allies will help us teach our community that gender is made up of more than just male and female, that gender is simply a trait no different than height or skin color, predetermined at conception. Through leadership like tonight's action by the Council, we can begin to educate our community that gender occurs across a wonderful spectrum and is only one aspect of what it means to be human. Transgender Day of Visibility gives us the opportunity to show the world that trans people are just as human as everyone else. We are parents who love our families, employees who work hard at our jobs, entrepreneurs with successful businesses, and citizens who want to make our communities a better place. Just like you, we are people who want to have the opportunity to live our lives peacefully and not in fear of discrimination or harm. Transgender Day of Visibility is an opportunity for us to demonstrate that transgender community members, like all those who are marginalized, are equal members of our society and deserve to be treated as such. It is only when all of us work together that we will begin to address the hate, unemployment, homelessness, lack of adequate healthcare, violence, and other issues facing transgender individuals. Only then can we begin addressing the physical and emotional scars that have been inflicted upon me and my siblings. I urge everyone to take a moment to learn more about Transgender Day of Visibility, your trans neighbors, and how you can help our county make it a better place for all of us. In closing, I would once again like to thank the Council for their leadership in acknowledging the equality for Talbot County's transgender residents and for recognizing their contributions. Thank you so much for this proclamation. It is truly, truly appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. I really appreciate your kind words, and not only that, in the last year, I really appreciate all your courage and all you've done for transgender. So I really appreciate it, and Talbot County appreciates it, and the Council appreciates it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Council, let's move on to discuss.
Did we vote on this yet, Mr. Council? Did we vote on this yet? Can we discuss first?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep. Go ahead. Council comments.
Yes, Mr. President, while we still have Ms. Jones in the line, you know, Ms. Jones, your contributions to this county, to this region alone are legion. And if we multiply that by 1,000, we can really see the impact, the potential of this community. So thank you for your work in raising this awareness. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Any other Council member?
Again, I'll just echo what Mr. Lesher said. Thank Ms. Jones and her, and the rest of her group. I don't know whether or not there was other members who petitioned for this proclamation, but we want to make sure that we support them in their quest for inclusion and quest for equality, that we also want to be a voice for that here in Talbot County, that we will treat people fairly, and we will give people their equal access to government. So I like the word you used earlier, Ms. Callahan, which was carriage. Sometimes when you are forging ahead and making a way, it does take a deal of carriage, and I would agree with you with that.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. So, okay, Council, Madam Secretary, do I need a motion?
Yes, you do.
I'll make the motion, Ms. Callahan.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DeVille. I got a motion in a second. Can the roll call, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVille?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate it. Thanks a lot, Mrs. Jones, for being on here, and we wish you well.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Okay, no problem. No problem.
You have a good evening.
Okay, you too. Okay, Council, discussions on the Bay Bridge Crossing Study, Tier One Draft, Impact Study, Environmental Impact Study. Council of Maryland Transportation Authority has released the Bay Crossing Study impact and has scheduled a public hearing in April. Concord 8 is still included in the study in Talbot County. So we have invited Miguel, our Director of Planning, to discuss this a little bit with us so we can hopefully put this thing to bed, and it's not coming at all, hopefully. Miguel, are you with us?
I am with you.
Yeah, so let's, I don't want to, I'd rather not spend a whole lot of time on it because there's not one person hopefully breathing in Talbot County at once. So, you know, so can you tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. I mean, this is the draft environmental impact statement. It's their Tier One NEPA process. They're required to get through this NEPA process. As you are aware from, I think, conversations that the Council has had in the past, there were different alignment alternatives that were presented in the draft EIS document. This Council has provided communication, I think, twice on the Tier One study, and has made it very clear that they oppose the corridor alignment that impacts Talbot County specifically across the bay and through just north of St. Michael's, and then through Talbot County north of Easton to Route 50. We have made that very clear. The draft environmental impact statement has made it very clear that preferred alignment is existing or a future crossing adjacent to the existing Bay Bridge and then on to 50. So as you mentioned, Mr. President, there will be, I think, at least one public hearing. I can't remember if there's more than that.
Yeah, in April. Yeah, in April.
Yeah, and we do have another opportunity to comment if the Council should to do that. And again, if funding becomes available, there will be a Tier Two study that identifies more specific alignment alternatives within that corridor that would be selected. Again, the preferred corridor in this draft is a corridor adjacent to the existing.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Miguel. So, Council, I'm assuming Council wants to speak on this. I think we need to send another letter. So let's hear from Council. Mrs. Price?
Finding the unmute button. Yeah, I mean, if you remember, this was, there were 14 that they looked at from, you know, all the way from the northern end of the Chesapeake Bay all the way to the southern end of the Chesapeake Bay. And what I'll say, you know, a lot of people think about just the beach traffic, and that the reason, you know, people wondered, why wouldn't something say in the southern part? Because right now, we're in the middle, the six, seven, and eight, Talbot County being corridor eight, the seven being the existing Bay Bridge, you know, why wouldn't something more southern that goes to Ocean City? But, you know, we're talking about commuter traffic, and that commuter traffic between, you know, the eastern shore and, you know, Baltimore, Annapolis, and DC. So when they looked at the impact and how much traffic flow would be reduced, a lot of people just think about beach traffic, but really, you got to talk about Monday through Friday, people going back and forth to work, which is why it ended up falling in the middle section of corridor six, seven, and eight. Clearly, now that this study is out, and the environmental impacts, and the cost of the bridge is, you know, well more than double if funding ever became available. So I don't think that there's any danger of it actually being chosen to be, you know, corridor six or corridor eight, and particularly ours being corridor eight. The cost and the environmental impact, it would never pass. So I think we'll be fine, but I absolutely think we should continue to reiterate that letter and talk about, and talk about that.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Who was that? Mr. DeVille, was that you?
No, but I can go.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so I'm taking this directly from the report on page 12 of the executive summary. There are two statements, and I really like this page for anybody who's looking for information on it. But to kind of calm some fears, and there's a lot of acronyms I'm going to try to read through. As a result, corridor seven was identified as the Maryland Department of Transportation recommended preferred corridor alternative, which is adding another bridge to the current location. The selection of an alternative will not be finalized until the comments on this draft environmental impact statement and input from the public hearings are considered. So they're still waiting to hear from the public on this draft environmental impact statement, but they have narrowed it down to the three, with number seven being the shortest crossing of the Chesapeake Bay due to the narrower width of the bay at this location. And due to that, they're recommending this location because of it's, it has a smaller environmental impact because of the short location. So I'm excited that they have addressed some of the big concerns that I have, but I'm also hoping, and when we met with them two years ago in Ocean City at Mako, we brought up traffic flow from Annapolis and from DC all the way to the beach. This study is just across the bay, and I am concerned about when cars, more cars are going to come through Easton. That study hasn't been done nor through Cambridge and continuing. There will be bottleneck, so I would like anybody who is sending statements on this on behalf of Talbot County to also consider that we want to make sure that they're addressing that as well. So corridor seven, I believe we're all in agreeance on corridor seven, but let's make sure that we do keep them, hold them accountable, that they maintain traffic flow all the way through our county and not just across the bay.
Thank you, Mr. DeVille. I appreciate you bringing up those points and reading that for us and getting everybody online with that. So, Mr. Pack?
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Yeah, we addressed this two years ago down in Ocean City with MDE and MTA regarding our opposition to corridor eight, a number of things that were already mentioned by Mr. DeVille, as well as Mrs. Price. I don't want to go through those again, but quite obviously, you know, the environmental impact and the traffic impact coming through St. Michael's, I think they even changed this a bit from the original report, because I think the original report had the traffic bleeding into 50, and now it looks like it's going to go straight across Royal Oak. But anyway, it's quite obviously not the corridor that should be selected, and it sounds like that they have come to that determination as well. So, but it does not hurt to go on record again and to say that we certainly are opposed to corridor eight being one of their selections.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. Vice President?
I agree with all the points made by other Council members already here. I do think that we should add a letter for the record in this public comment period. And while I'm relieved that this draft at Tier One shows corridor eight not to be the preferred route for multiple sound costs and environmental reasons, I'm disappointed that despite the fact that we in a previous communication already informed the MTA of the potential impact to historic resources, these were given no acknowledgement in the draft EIS, at least not in the executive summary, and even if there is some fine print down below, some of those points should be really be elevated to the executive summary because these are some of the really consequential impacts of a corridor eight route. I find also that the measures of the impacts on low-income and minority communities were measured by census tract, and they found in summary that no impacted census tracts in Talbot County that are, that are qualified as low-income or minority communities. But we know, in fact, that this ignores the direct and devastating impact to both Copperville and Unionville. Well, clearly, those are not separated out as census tracts, or they would have surfaced in that analysis. And so it suggests that there's no impact to these low-income and minority communities where we know, in fact, that there would be. I think that, you know, this is perhaps a flaw in the methodology, but it's something that does need to be pointed out and should be emphasized in our letter, our comment on this draft.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I tag on to what Mr. DeVille was mentioning? So I think it's that we should not only be just reiterating what we've already reiterated about corridor eight, but again, there's no, I don't think there's any danger of that, but it is exactly that the improving the roadways through Queen Anne's County, Talbot County, Dorchester County, and we have spoken with the representatives in person about that, but I think that probably should be the main thrust of our letter, since that's probably the only one they're going to be considering, is to make them very aware that, I mean, with just two lanes of traffic, with all of the traffic lights that go through there, you know, the traffic, just local traffic, even if you're not traveling, is really bad. So that they need to address putting a third lane in all the way down through Dorchester County, and then figuring out, I don't know how you address the traffic lights because there's really no way to bypass around it, but certainly, you know, a third lane would be helpful. And I think also that they need the overpass where it splits at 404, I think is worth mentioning, because that traffic light there is a big bottleneck, because a lot of people will get off, and instead of standing on 50 going through Talbot County, they'll take 404, which is a good thing, but it stops there because it's a left turn traffic light. So those two things I would hope we could include in our letter.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price. You brought up a lot of good points. Appreciate it. So, Mr. Stam, do you want to, you and Miguel, do you want to go ahead and try to draft up a letter with all these, you know, very, very important comments that Council has brought up?
Yes, sir, we will take care of that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Council. Okay. Thank you, Miguel, too. Appreciate you being on here with us.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so Council, let's kind of move on to the next thing on the agenda. So, Council, the next item on the agenda is to introduce. Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, if we could loop back to one thing, I think in our.
Yeah, sure, sure.
You run a very efficient meeting, and in your great efficiency, I think we managed to skip over item number three, the approval of the minutes. Would this be a good time to loop back to?
Absolutely. That's why I got a good Vice President. That's all. That's good. All right. Yep, let's go back to the minutes for one second here. As Council had a chance to review the minutes on March 9th, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections in the minutes? If hearing none, the Chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry to interrupt on that.
No, 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 no problem. I really appreciate that. Okay, all right, so, okay, so I think we're all set to introduce the new legislation. Madam Secretary, would you please read the first title to the bill? Because we have three tonight, so if you don't mind reading the very first one, that would be great.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap real property owned by Talbot County, Maryland, located on St. Michael's Road, Maryland Route 33, Easton, Maryland 21601, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 34, Grid 2, as Parcel 11, from Unprogrammed to S1 Immediate Priority Status.
That sounds great. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, Mr. Clark, Mr. Edwards, is anybody on here that can speak about this legislation, the purpose of it?
Mr. Callahan, Ray Clark is here if you need him.
Hey, hey, Ray, how you doing? You want to just give a brief?
Sure thing.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Basically, this resolution is to remap or create a remapping within the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to designate the repurposing site on Route 33 as S1 Immediate Priority Status for sewer service, so that ultimately the sewer can be extended out to the repurposing facility. I know that some questions have been raised, and I'll just give it to you right now. There are probably eight properties, I guess, eight residential properties that head out to the repurposing facility, and there's, I believe, six commercial, or I'm sorry, five commercial and one light industrial just beyond the repurposing facility between the repurposing facility and the town of Easton.
That sounds great. I appreciate that, Mr. Clark. Is anybody else with you that wants to speak about this? Okay, all right, so.
Quick question for Mr. Clark.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice President.
You speak of these other properties, but these are not being proposed in this legislation for S1, is that correct?
That is correct. I do know that there had been some discussions, you know, in the past of possibly adding them. I guess that could happen if the Council chooses to do that by amending the resolution. I think one of the things right now is that if we're looking at extending sewer to the repurposing facility, we would be looking at a cost of about $180,000 to do that, to get the sewer as well as the force main installed. If you brought in the eight residential property owners, they would share in that cost in that force main that goes out, so you probably would see a savings of about $50,000 to $60,000 for that.
Or do any of those properties have failed? Or do any of those properties have failing sewers now? Failing septics?
I've heard of one from one property owner that has indicated that they've had problems with it. But I have not heard that in Office of Environmental Health is designated, I think, failing at this time.
Do we have? Do we have a priority system of of sort of ranking where in the county we have the most failing septics in terms of determining where we where we have to prioritize extending sewer?
I think what we have done in the past, we've utilized like the the priorities that have been established for the septic system upgrades, which would be priority one is in the critical areas, you know, failing in the critical areas, failing outside the critical areas. Typically, we also look at trying to extend sewer where we have the, you know, failing septic systems that are along or near our force main. So that's another thing that we've looked at. You know, if we can get sewer to them feasibly, then that's been the other option.
And the repurposing, neither the repurposing center nor any of those eight properties are in critical area, are they?
They are not, no.
I I kind of wonder about the priority of this.
Let me just, if I if I could, speak to the
Sure, Mr. Pack, go ahead.
Question of failing septic. Even if you look at the state of Maryland, the MD, under the MDE regs, septic systems were never intended to be a permanent way to deal with wastewater in a septic field. When the availability of sewer became accessible, it is much rather preferred, even if the system is not technically failing, to have that system connected to a sewer line. Any scientist would tell you, even a sewer system that's working perfectly as designed, a septic system, I'm sorry, even a septic system that's working perfectly as designed, still adds nitrogen into the groundwater. So to say that we have to focus on quote unquote failing systems when there is approximation to a sewer line, it's not really, in my opinion, the way to look at this. The way to look at this is to get systems on sewer where they can be treated appropriately. And even the state of Maryland has a preference that if there's an availability of a sewer line, to get those systems onto a sewer line.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. Oh, my goodness, it's happening again. That sewer is, you know, like 100 times better. I don't know. I mean, it's it's huge to to get properties off of septic systems, like like he said. So if there's an opportunity for a reasonable cost of converting it over to a to a sewer line, I'm 100% supportive of that.
Thank you, Ms. Bryce. Good made some good points, Mr. Pack. I appreciate that. You you want you want to speak, Mr. DeVille, real quick?
I don't really have anything to add after that.
Okay, all right, no problem. I don't want to forget you now. I don't want to forget you. All right. Okay. So, all right. Hey, thank you, Ray. Appreciate you explaining that. So, okay, council, because we are meeting in a virtual environment this evening, I'm going to ask Madam Secretary to please conduct a roll call to introduce the legislation.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVille?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Lesher?
Lesher didn't unmute. Nay.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Bryce?
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, please announce the bill number and the public hearing date and the time of the and time for the legislation, please.
This will be known as Resolution Number 299, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 13 at 6:30 PM.
Okay, sounds great. That sounds great. Okay, council, are we ready to move on to the next? Any anything for that one? We'll move on. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the title to the next bill, please, for the record?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap commercial real property located on Ocean Gateway and Marina Drive, Trap, Maryland 21673, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 62 as Parcels 13, 21, 42, 43, and 80, from Unprogrammed to S1 Immediate Priority Status, and to reclassify and remap residential real property located on Ocean Ferry Point Drive, Trap, Maryland 21673, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 62 as Parcels 1 through 19, from Unprogrammed to S2 Future Planned Sewer Service in 3 to 5 Years.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Clark, you want to just say a few words on this one for us, too, please?
Sure thing. This basically is coming out of some work that we worked on with the county council on and doing a preliminary engineering report with Bayland Consultants. As part of that, we were looking at doing a community-based system to serve the commercial properties as well as the residential properties. I think we're in a position to actually assist, I believe it's five, commercial properties and getting them sewer. So the focus right now is to try and do a MBR-type wastewater treatment system to provide sewer to those commercial properties. But with the expansion at the future date, if need be, to go to those residential properties in that area as well. So that's basically what we're trying to do. In addition to that, we're also establishing a capital project for the funding within this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your hard work on that, too.
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Clark?
Go ahead.
So we've been around with this one a lot. We talked about running the line down, trying to connect with the Trap wastewater treatment plant and all of that. What exactly type of facility is this going to be? And because, I mean, the the cost was was an issue. And if it's only five commercial properties, I mean, I know we don't subsidize things, but I'm how can five commercial properties possibly afford the building of this entire plant? And what type of plant, again, is it?
It'll probably more likely to be an MBR system, micro bioreactor type system that's been utilized, I guess, in some other areas, let's say, in Caroline County, as well as up up north. These treatment systems basically can meet ENR quality, enhanced nutrient removal quality of three milligrams per liter total nitrogen and .3 milligrams per liter total phosphorus. The disposal is going to be something that we have to review and get concurrence with from the Maryland Department of the Environment on. And that's just part of the other problem we are having to do with the Complor Sewer Plan is to establish this. But we are looking at two methods of disposal of the effluent. The first method is basically through a steam a stream discharge permit and or possibly groundwater injection. So they're looking at those two options at this point in time for the disposal. To your point, there will be a cost associated with this, probably about $700,000 or, you know, or more. That's where we are going to go to rural development to see if we can secure funding through rural development. This has also been a project that's been added to the SEDs with the Metro Regional Council. So this is something that we're, you know, to help also try and generate, let's say, economic development funds through grants that also help assist installing this. So.
A follow-up question. So discharge, and I'm sorry, my dogs are barking in the background, and there's nobody around to take them out. The through the discharge, it still ends up in the Chop Tank River, as opposed to, like we were just talking about the last one, with a sewer line, it's still going to be discharged out into, you know, the water of the Chop Tank River. And, you know, of course, there's there's even still this this development that's going on in Trap of the 501 homes or whatever, that people are upset about the spray irrigation and things like that. So you're talking about three milligrams and .3 mil of all that kind of stuff. Put that in perspective, that if that were to on a sewer line, what would that number be? It won't go out at all, right? Because it goes to a treatment plant.
It would go through the treatment plant. And that treatment plant would actually go to, let's say, the Trap wastewater system. So Trap wastewater system currently is a BNR system, so it doesn't have the lower levels of treatment at this point.
Correct. We know that the Trap plant is not what is optimal. But typically, you know, still, the point is sewer lines are better. And so I'm just not thrilled with whatever this is, it ends up in the Chop Tank River.
Yeah.
And 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 MBR, and MBR, if I may, Ray, and MBR, Mrs. Bryce, is a sewer system. It's just a smaller system. You know, what we have in Region 2 is a larger 600,000 gallon system. But even that treated water would end up in a river body, in a water body, treated within a water body, or it would be sprayed onto a field as what Trap is planning to do with their treated water. So this is a system. It is a smaller system, an MBR system is a smaller, if you look at a micro, micro or mini wastewater treatment plant, it will be treated at those ENR levels, which our Region 2 treatment plant cleans at a ENR level, as well as the Eastern wastewater treatment plant, they treat at an ENR level. Right now, as you know, Trap does not treat at an ENR level. So the MBR system is a micro wastewater treatment plant, and it either would discharge other to a water body, to a spray field, or to a, as Ray pointed out, to an injection into a groundwater. So.
Thank you. So those are the much lower levels that we're looking for. Thank you.
Exactly.
Clarification.
Okay. Okay, council, are we all good? Anybody else? Mr. Lesher?
Yeah, just a just a question about are we at a point of of financial arrangement with these property owners that we're ready to move already to the the S1 status? Or is that a requirement for us to be able to
We've we've had this
Some of the grant funding?
I've had discussions in the past with the property owners. We will need to approach the property owners again. The commercial property owners have indicated in past discussions a willingness to move forward. We've had issues more associated with the residential property owners. We've had a few residential property owners that had been willing to come on. But then the other the other problem we've run into is there's a private road issue that we've got to deal with. And then a majority of the residential property owners did not want to come on at this time. So we were trying to focus on the
Are we designing this? We're designing this, we're scaling this just for the commercial properties at this time, and it would later be added on to or scaled up for the residential if that ever happens?
I think we'll have enough capacity when we look at the the system, the way it is designed, it'll have enough capacity to go over to the residential property owners. We'll probably have to set up a structure while they'll pay their fair share into that plant. But the plant, it might be just a, I think we're looking like a 20,000 gallon per day plant. And so I think the the total total volume that may be needed is 15,000 for both the commercial and residential.
This this S1 designation is just for the commercial properties?
Yes, sir.
But did you actually answer the question that they would be self-sufficient, that these five properties would be able to cover the entire cost of this project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And if I may add, if if history is any any indicator of future activities, when we did the Thornton Road project, Mrs. Bryce, you may remember, there was one one property on Thornton Road down outside of Royal Oak that had a failing septic. And Ray was able to get some rural development money to run the line down there. Well, once that line started being trenched along though, that neighborhood, I think we picked up nearly every home in that neighborhood, if I'm not mistaken, Ray, maybe maybe save one. But when you when you are a homeowner and you see the value in having a sewer line as opposed to a septic system, it was it would be somewhat foolhardy not to connect. So as some homeowners may say today, hey, I just put a new septic system filled in. I don't want to go on to sewer right now today. Again, if if the past is any indicator, once that line has started being trenched out, you will probably see homeowners say, hey, I want to I want to connect.
Okay. Okay, council, anybody else?
I'm just I'm just not clear yet on the sequence of events here. This this is required to get the 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 grant funding through through the SEDs or or any other?
We we the the reason we have to do the Complor Sewer Plan amendment is really twofold. One is is to establish a capital project. And then ultimately, in addition to that, for us to go ahead and get the permit process rolling, the Complor Sewer Plan has to be amended. So we, you know, we're MDE will only do a preliminary review of the permit. So for us to go ahead and through go through the permit process, we have to amend the Complor Sewer Plan.
It it has to be in our in Talbot County's Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, Mr. Lesher, before we can get any grant dollars for the project. So we have to amend the Comprehensive Water Plan to add it into. If you remember, again, going back on your history, the big squabble with the town of Trap was that Talbot County never included that project into our Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. But MDE went ahead and issued them the permit anyway. So we're trying to do things the right way.
Yeah.
Those projects have to be included in the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan before they get consideration for grant dollars through MDE or other sources. Trap was a little bit of a quagmire. They got it anyway. God bless them. And enough of that.
And and the the Public Works Advisory Board has has reviewed this and is making a positive recommendation on it.
We have, we will present these to the resolutions, all the resolutions to the Public Works Advisory Board, and we'll be looking at doing that at their April meeting and getting a recommendation back to the county council on them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. I appreciate that. And thank you, council, for those good comments and clarifying everything so everybody completely understands what we're doing. Okay, Madam Secretary, would you please conduct a roll call to introduce the legislation, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVille?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
I'm going to hold out on this. Nay.
Ms. Bryce?
I'm just going to hold off on introduction as well. Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Secretary, would you please announce the bill number and the public hearing date and the time of this getting introduced, please?
Yes, this will be known as Resolution Number 300. And the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 13 at 6:30 PM.
Sounds great.
Mr. Callahan, can I ask one more question of Mr. Clark?
Sure.
Currently, those commercial properties are using what? Were they on septic systems?
Right now, my understanding, there are three commercial properties that are on septic systems, and there are two vacant commercial properties at this time.
Okay. So and when you're on septic, you can't expand?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Madam Secretary, would you read the last bill that we've got to go over here to the record, please?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to approve a capital project for the improvements associated with the wastewater treatment system on Rustling Oak Drive, Wy Mills, Maryland, shown on Talbot County Tax Map 1, Grid 23, as Parcel 98.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Clark, you want to go ahead and
Sure thing.
announce a little bit about about this one?
This here, just so the council is aware, the Complor Sewer Plan was amended to include the Preservate Wy Mills wastewater system. Unfortunately, though, we, because of the system having problems, we have to do a capital project within the Complor Sewer Plan to replace that wastewater system. So that's what this this Complor Sewer Plan is doing is basically establishing a capital project so that we can begin the process of going to MDE and reviewing with them basically loan as well as grant packages to look at replacing that wastewater system. And at the same time, I think councils, we were looking at trying to, I guess, provide some funding to the homeowners association via a loan that we paid back to do the preliminary engineering report, which would also be used to support the capital project once we have that in place.
Okay, Mr. Clark, I appreciate it. Council, any any questions? Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary, once again, can you conduct a roll call to introduce this legislation, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, can you have a number for the bill for us and a date and time?
Yes, this will be known as Resolution Number 301. The public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 13th at 6:30 PM.
Sounds great. Okay, does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Clark? Okay, council, I appreciate it. Thanks a lot, Ray, for hanging out with us, explaining that. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the General Assembly legislation. Mrs., Madam Secretary, I don't think we have anything, correct?
No, we do not, sir.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, our main man, county manager, Mr. Clay Stamp, can you start us off, buddy? You might want to take us off mute.
You hear me, okay?
There you go, bud. Yep, you got you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. And members of the council, I have three items of business for you this evening. The first are board and committee appointments. And the first one is for the Agricultural Resolution Board requesting the reappointment of Robert Greenley at large to the Agricultural Resolution Board.
I'll move for his reappointment.
A second.
Madam Secretary, could you take a roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Next item I have is requesting the reappointment of Kristen Jones to the Emergency Services Advisory Board.
Both?
Kristen Jones. Go move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you take a roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next is the tourism board is requesting the appointment of Kristen Greenway, Chesapeake State Maritime Museum, as the countywide cultural attraction representative.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
I'm recusing myself on this one.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next item I have is regarding the format of county council meetings through April of 2021 with guidance from Dr. Maria McGuire, Talbot County Health Officer, seeking council approval to remain in a virtual meeting environment through the end of April 2021.
I'm a commercial to agree with the recommendation of our health officer.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
The final item I have is request for letter of support of Waterfowl Chesapeake grant application to the Maryland Historical Trust for a FY21 capital grant for the restoration of the historic steel windows in the Waterfowl Building located 40 South Harrison Street in Easton. There are no county funds required.
Mr. President, I've been consistently careful on this before, but I'm on the Maryland Heritage Area's authority, which ultimately approves these. And so sending a letter of support would be sort of like sending a letter to myself. So I probably should recuse myself on this one as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Appreciate you telling us.
And since the county manager said the magic words of no county funds are required, be happy to make a motion for this.
A second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion to second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Council President, I conclude your county manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Once again, phenomenal job. You and your team, you and your team.
We have a wonderful team.
Yeah, we do. Okay. Next on the agenda is a public comment. Okay, Mr. Durham, do we have anybody on the line?
We do have a few people remotely participating in the meeting tonight. If you're interested in speaking, please click on the raise hand button in the lower right-hand corner of your computer or the asterisk 3 on your telephone to indicate you wish to speak.
All right, first caller, could you please tell us your name and where you're from, please?
No one has indicated.
What we'll do if somebody pops on and wants to talk? Let's go ahead and start with council comments. Mr. Vice President, Mr. Leshers, you want to say anything?
I've nothing further this evening.
Okay. All right, sounds great. Mr. Pack?
Yes, I just wanted, yeah, thank you, Mr. Callahan. I just want to encourage citizens to get whatever vaccine shot that becomes available to them. It is still crucial that we become vaccinated. We've seen the pictures on TV where people are flocking to the beaches and so forth. So the virus is still out, it's still deadly. And I would just encourage everyone, whether it be the J&amp;J or Pfizer or Moderna, if whatever vaccine that you can get in, you please take so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeVio?
So thank you. I'd just like to take a quick second to thank the Parks and Rec Department and Preston Pepper. We had an excellent, my kids had an excellent hockey season. I traveled around to a couple of different rinks with the team and saw different cities, different towns, counties implementing things that just, it sounds safe, but when it's practical, it doesn't work. And the staff out there just did a great job of keeping everybody socially distanced, keeping the parents socially distanced, giving plenty of space for the kids to get dressed and geared up. I really, really want to thank them for going above and beyond to keep everybody safe, continue activities for the kids, and to get the spring program out, or the new program for sports for this calendar year. It's out, it's in your mailboxes. If you didn't get it, stop up to the community center. Preston's got a big stack of them up there. There's some great programs coming up, and it's no secret that kids are in need of some mental health, getting out, socializing safely outdoors. And we're, being the rep on the Parks Board, we're doing everything we can to keep it safe, but keep these kids going and active. So I really want to thank all of those who are involved. There's just so many people out there that do so many great things for the kids, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Appreciate those kind words. Ms. Price?
Just want to say that tomorrow is our legislative wrap-up day, our Mako sign-and-die meeting. Sadly, it's still virtual. I just want to make some public kudos here to the staff, how unprecedented this session was. It's been frustrating to be at arm's length, not being able to be in Annapolis for our Mako staff and for, you know, legislators and lobbyists to be able to go in. But they have just done an excellent job. They've had extra sessions that not only has Legislative Committee been in on speakers, but there's been sessions where we've brought in Senator Cardin and Dr. Karen Sam and the state superintendent, and sessions on the vaccinations. So they've really done an incredible job. I just want to publicly thank them here. I'm honored to be a part of that organization, and that takes place tomorrow morning. And we are tentatively planning to have the Mako Summer Conference in August in Ocean City. We have not been able to have, didn't have it last year, and we also missed Winter Conference. It will be good to get back. We think that there's a way to do it. And, you know, the way the vaccines are rolling out, hopefully it should be a halfway normal conference. I'm sure it'll be a little bit less amount of people. But we are on track for that, which is really invaluable for the organization. So Annapolis Legislature is not quite done yet, but we're wrapping up our things tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. I want to go back to Mr. Durham. Does anybody, does anybody have any calls or anybody want to talk?
No one has indicated.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll wrap things up. And I'd like to sort of jump on the bandwagon with Mr. DeVio and Mrs. Price. You know, it's been, it's been a team effort here with the pandemic and Mrs. Price, you handling things over to Annapolis for us, and you do such a great job. And we really need to make sure that we give kudos to all the team members, all the people that help us, our employees make us look good here. And I can't thank you guys enough for all the hard work you're doing, keeping us straight, keeping the county safe, all the coordination. It literally takes literally hundreds of people to run this county. And I think we're a spotlight on the state, and we set presence on a lot of things, and people look at us and envy us on a lot of things. So we've had a great night tonight. We've done something that I haven't seen in seven years. Mrs. Price and Mr. Pack have agreed at least three to four times. And it's a moment in time. And I tell you what, we kid around a lot, but it just shows you, it shows you that we can do teamwork. And all kidding aside, I do appreciate it. And we've had a great night here, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lesher to wrap it up for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. The council will be holding a virtual budget work session on Thursday, March 25th, beginning at 4 o'clock PM. Therefore, as their motion to adjourn the meeting and reconvene is noted.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right, see you.
Thanks a lot, council. I appreciate it.